Mr. Teves?
Dr. Cortelina?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Dr. Kane? Dr. Mulcher?
Here.
Mr. Morell? Mrs. Novy? Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Genevieve Blake? Chase Surratt? One present.
Thank you. Please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands alone in history, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jim, please read the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law Statement.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to, according to Gance's notice, to attend to meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon, in accordance with the provisions of the Act of Montpel Township Board of Education approved this meeting here. Members of the meetings were posted at the Montpel Municipal Building, Montpel Public Schools, Montpel Public Library, the Montpel Township Board of Education and Ministry of Office Building, the Montpel Public School Website, and advertised in the Daily Register.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Teves. So we'll jump right into the superintendent's report and the presentation of our proposed budget.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. This evening, we're going to be bringing you the second presentation of our proposed budget after some revisions from a week ago. Jim Teves, our business administrator, and I will be doing a presentation for the board and community, and then, as is our practice, we'll follow with comments and questions. So I understand that the projector that usually helps us project onto the walls is not working tonight. We don't have the right computer software, so we'll need to project onto this screen. So the board, perhaps, would like to take a seat in the audience, so you can be more comfortable seeing the presentation. If you want to stay there, that's fine. And I will have to get out of the way of it as well. So some of the preliminary slides have to do with our mission statement and other areas which I'll go through very quickly. Again, our mission statement, I think everyone's familiar with it, and our vision, that high expectations and opportunity, teacher effectiveness and student engagement, inclusive and collaborative, and maintaining excellence will become a district of distinction. These are our learning goals for this year, and in past presentations, I have elaborated on them, so I won't tonight. But certainly, if you have any questions about them, as our question and answer period takes place, please feel free to ask about them. So again, our budget provides, at the elementary level, maintaining class size according to our board policy at the middle school and high school as well. Programs at elementary and middle school and high school are maintained or teaming according to programs. We do have some new initiatives and enhancements to our programs at all levels and athletics and clubs. We maintain our present athletic and club structure, and we have new equipment. Terms of elementary school proposals, this slide is not different than the others, but I do want to explain the first item on this slide, which are instructional materials to enhance literacy and mathematics programs, including a new writing program. In a slide or two, you'll see that we've made some adjustments, and some of those adjustments were made due to the fact that we're actually taking two programs that were contained in this section. A new elementary writing program, which we think is going to be a great addition to our elementary schools, as well as a literacy program. And we're able to, based on this year's budget, purchase those two items from this year's budget. We'll be able to provide some professional development for our teachers in those programs this spring, which will give us a head start going into next year. And that will do some savings in next year's budget. That will allow us to make some modifications and some staffing, which I'll show you in just a moment. Continuing, we have program renewals in all core content areas and some support for schools in the area of nurses for our elementary schools. We already have those generally built in for our middle school and high school as well. So this is the staffing change. You'll recall that last week, we were looking at a reduction of three elementary teachers, and now we're recommending the reduction of two, one at Valley View and one on Woodmont, based on staffing connected to the enrollment. The one that was here last week, which is here now in terms of a reduction, was at William Mason. So I'll take a moment and explain my decision for making this change. In looking at all five elementary schools and looking at class sizes and looking at places where we might find ourselves needing to hire an elementary teacher in the next year, of course, that would be an unbudgeted teacher if we didn't budget for it. The only school that we really faced, I thought, a significant risk of having to hire an additional teacher was at William Mason, where at two different grade levels, we were within two students of exceeding the class size limit. And if that were to occur before August, the end of August, we would be increasing staffing there, and it would have been unbudgeted at that point. We have another school or two where, in one grade level, we have that particular phenomenon, but William Mason was the only school where we had it in two places, and I felt that's double the chance of it happening. And as ironic as this sounds, today, William Mason got one additional student in one of those areas. So now they're literally one student away at one grade level from having to staff another teacher, and two students away in the other. So my recommendation for the non-reduction, if you will, of a William Mason teacher basically is this: While the area where we would not be reducing the teacher would be in second grade, allowing those to remain at three sections, if, in fact, we find ourselves exceeding the class size limit at the fourth grade level instead, then that teacher would, in fact, be teaching that grade level. So the William Mason addition, or the, I shouldn't say addition, but the lack of the decrease, would be put back in order to fill the spot where contractual, not contractually, but based on board policy, we would need it. So again, right now, and I've spoken to Mr. Malucci, the principal of the school, right now, it would be slated for grade two, where there are the three sections presently, to keep it remaining at three, but in fact, it could eventually be moved to grade four, if that's where we exceed the class size limit. And certainly, I can explain more if you have questions about that. So continuing, and so reverting back to the other slide, the writing program and the literacy program actually are fairly significant programs, so those two programs plus one other initiative I'll talk about in a moment are paying for the retention of the William Mason teacher. So Chromebooks and carts to support instruction at each elementary school, smart boards and speakers in specific schools, the middle school stipend for the bursar, and Chromebooks and carts to support instruction. At the high school, we continue to add an additional point for ESL teacher, which will require benefits as it now becomes a full-time position. Science research program stipends, and the media center stipend to keep the media center open before and after school. What's no longer on this slide is the paraprofessional for the high school media center. That position has now been taken off, and the cost of that has also been used to pay for the teacher at William Mason. So just a comment about the paraprofessional. The media center at the high school probably isn't opening until the end of October or November anyway. There are always at least, besides our media specialist, there's always at least one other adult in the media center. It is the high school duty, and during the lunch hour, there's actually, I learned today, there's actually two additional staff members in there during that busy lunch hour working with the media specialist, so a total of at least three adults. Since we can predict what the media center traffic will be like and what the situation will be, again, I think it's safe to not bring that position into the district, and as you get a year to observe and see what's happening there, there can always be an interest in bringing that position, you know, into the district in the future. This slide stayed the same: New course offerings, APU in geography, and the expansion of the research-based humanities program. This slide has changed. Last time, a week ago, we had four teachers, four special education teachers, go to the high school. We've reduced it slightly to three teachers plus three 1-6 stipends. This is a cost saving of about $48,000 to have three teachers and three 1-6 stipends instead of four full teachers. So as Jim said, found that she can make do with this and still run a terrific program. So we recommended this change, and we continue to need the halftime teacher at Cedar Hill, continue with stipends, that was our middle school, and then those additional stipends that have always been recommended for the science class and special education math lab. Special services, you've seen this slide before. This is for our primary special education program located at William Mason. The program now is being operated by Bergen Special Services at a cost of a little more than $844,000. We're going to operate the program ourselves for a cost of about $668,000. Potential savings is a little more than $176,000. These are additional initiatives: Media Center at the high school, of course, lots go into that, including the Board of Education, the Reserve Fund, Capital Reserve, putting forth about $1,720,000. School Resource Officer, a shared service with the township. I'm in the process of doing some work. I've asked my superintendent colleagues around the county if they have any shared service agreements with SROs in their own communities and districts, and I've received three or four of them. I'll be sharing those with Jim and with our attorneys. I've spoken to Victor Canning over the last week to talk to him about particular aspects of the shared service, such as the officers being with us for our full seven, seven-and-a-half-hour day. If someone in the township police department calls in sick, would our SRO be taken to fill that spot? I was assured that would not happen, and he's going to talk to the town council to make sure, of course, that this is a person completely dedicated to our schools. Certainly, if there's an emergency in the community, we would all understand that all available police officers might have to attend to that, but otherwise, they would be within our school district. So we would be looking at some sort of written agreement that would kind of spell out the rules and so that we all would be comfortable with it. And we do, again, continue with a reduction of a secondary teaching position, and once again, we're not sure exactly what that position would be at this moment in time, as high school scheduling is still continuing. Near technology, we have 870 new Chromebooks and 27 carts coming into the district, 90 for each elementary school, 60 for ZAR, 120 for the high school, and then an additional 240 for placing aged-out equipment. We have smart board in the Hilldale Art Room, smart board speakers, one at Valley View and six at Hilldale, six laser printers at the high school. And in terms of athletic proposals, the strength and conditioning coach remains, and this is paid for through the decrease of the weight room coach stipend, and one assistant wrestling coach stipend. Leechers for the new turf field. And just a note, starting last Wednesday, we had our baseball team, girls' softball team, both lacrosse teams, track and field, I'm probably forgetting something, out on our turf fields playing, while I would venture to guess that our neighboring school districts are still inside. So the turf fields are already accommodating our athletes very, very nicely. Football helmets with five-star ratings, replacing those that don't have those, and a set of soccer balls for the new turf field. Professional development to these items are potentially this year: Dan Wilson Training, school improvement, panels or skip committees, Wilson Training, science research, AP course training, and training to support our teacher evaluation model. And again, district curriculum development, under Andrea's leadership, developing, continuing to develop curriculum as we go forward in essential areas. Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Jim, who'll continue with the capital maintenance proposals.
Thank you, Dr. Freed. Just want to take a few minutes and go over some of the initiatives that are contained as far as the facility projects and maintenance projects in the 15, 16 school year. At Cedar Hill, this year, we're going to be purchasing some vehicle deterrent bowlers. They're going to go along the driveway that goes off from the lower parking lot up to the steps that lead up to the school. At Hilldale, we're looking to replace interior gym doors. What this is, is actually the sliding partition, I think, with inside the gymnasium itself. It's been, we've been preparing it out for the last couple of years, but it's on its last leg. At Valley View, a big project that we're undertaking this summer is going to be the replacement of the boilers at that school. We're going to be using Capital Reserve funds to do that, so that helps the bottom line, you know, in terms of the operating budget, not having to hit that. We're also going to be doing, looking to replace some, repair broken blinds. At William Mason, we're looking to do a replacement of the intercom system over there. Also, we're going to be doing gymnasium doors and locks and handles. At Woodmont, we're looking to do some window latch repairs in the all-purpose room. At ZAR Middle School, we're doing another set of boiler replacements in this school. These boilers actually, the oldest in the district, they dated back in 1958. I believe a board member was kind enough to send me some historical reference on it, Old Betsy or something, I believe, was the name of the boilers they used to call it. Over at the library side, we're going to be doing some paving in the parking lot. We're going to be placing that intercom system as well. And we're going to do an electric upgrades as part of the cafeteria and kitchen area. This had to do with some of the new initiatives that were brought in with Montoni, and we need to upgrade that service. We're going to be taking care of that. At the high school, obviously, the big-ticket item that we've been working on for some time now is the renovations of the media center. We've already brought an architect onboard, and we're going to be progressing. We're looking to have construction of that happen over the summer. We're looking to purchase some elevated leechers for the new all-purpose turf fields, as Dr. Freed mentioned before. We're going to be replacing the stairs for the graduation on the outside, new set of soccer balls for the new synthetic turf fields, and a lightning detection system that was looked at, again, for the, it's to do with the synthetic turf fields, but it's actually going to be, the way it's designed is it can be used throughout the entire house area of the high school, not just on one field. And we're going to also be doing some additional security cameras as well. District-wide initiatives, we're going to be looking at parking lot repairs throughout the district and about four or five schools, and we have some vehicle maintenance upgrades we're going to be doing for pickup truck and snowplow. We're actually going to be lease purchasing these over five years, along with some annual purchases of computer equipment and copy machines as well. And technology initiatives, we have some more Chromebook purchases that have to do with the Humanities Research Program, some carts. I believe some of that has to do with park upgrades as well, but I believe that's minimal this year compared to the Humanities.
Pretty much.
Yeah, that was pretty much the initiative last year, the bulk of that. Security initiatives, we're, as Dr. Freed mentioned, we're going to be doing, looking to do a school resource officer, split that with the township, and then a number of other initiatives, some of which actually were on some of those previous slides, such as the security cameras that fall into our security budget. The proposed budget finance highlights, this is a budget that we presented to the board on February 27th in extract form. The financial highlights have really not changed at all. We're still at a 2% local tax levy cap increase. It's the maximum we can do by statute without going for waivers or extensions. It represents a little over 5% expense budget increase. This includes a $1.7 million Capital Reserve withdrawal for the media center renovations project, because obviously, the big question is, well, how can you have a 5% increase in your expenditure budget, but you're only allowed to increase your revenues by 2%? Well, part of the reason for that is because we are utilizing Capital Reserve and maintenance reserve funds for a number of those facility projects that I mentioned earlier, and those add to the expenditure budget, even though we're not using local tax money, we're using taxes, additional taxes to do it. That's money that was stored away over the last several years for just this purpose, for facility and capital improvements. Shared services, this is something that we've been trying to grow every single year. A number of districts are involved in that. Transportation, for example, is a very big one, especially here in special education, with a lot of neighboring districts. Instead of just having a route that has maybe five kids going to a school by themselves, it would be very, very expensive, we stopped at some other neighboring districts, pick up their students, go on to the same school. We do a lot of cooperative purchasing in terms of custodial and school supplies. Another one is insurance. It's for a full insurance program in New Jersey, New Jersey Pet. An initiative that we recently went into, two years ago, was with the township, was with garbage collection and recycling. As a matter of fact, I'm going to be bringing that to the board at our next regular meeting, next Tuesday night, with the recommendation to renew that agreement with the town. I feel it's been working very well. There's no increase in the recommended fee. We had an agreement that was current, the old agreement was $60,000, the new agreement is $60,000. I think it's a win-win. State aid, as I mentioned at the last budget meeting, state aid was flat. This was same case as, pretty much throughout the state of New Jersey, we were no exception. One major difference you see yet towards the bottom there is what's known as extraordinary aid. Extraordinary aid isn't actually part of the state aid, it's distributed in February. It's an application for special education costs. This is done every spring, and then sometime, usually in the very, very late June or early July, we get our assessments in from the state to let us know what those awards are. What we're going to be doing is, because it's been very consistent over the last several years, because our special education budgets are so high, and they're increasing even more in this budget, we decided to make a recommendation to utilize that extraordinary aid money, anticipated extraordinary money, to help fund this budget. We did have a number of special education cost increases that were in this 15, 16 budget, so this is going to help us to pay for those. This is a very difficult slide, so to speak, to try to eyeball and interpret all of the small printout on the screen, but I'd like to point out, I do have a presentation, sometime tomorrow, Dr. Freed, the actual presentation will be posted in full to the district's website, and it's a lot easier, obviously, going online, and you can zoom in and you can see everyone's numbers. Just a couple of things that I do want to point out, though, is if you look towards the middle, as far as the local tax levy percentage increase, you see we're right there at the max, as we were for the 14, 15 school year last year, 2%. We are looking at a tax rate increase towards the very bottom there, shows the tax rate increase. It's currently 20, you know what, I believe that got caught off in the presentation, and I'll have to fix that when I put it onto the slide tomorrow. I apologize. But the tax amount is roughly 100, what you can see, $152 for the average household in Montpel Township. The current assessed value for the average home is right around, let's see, I think we're about $528,000, roughly rounded, is the average assessed home value in Montpel Township. Again, you're looking at a budget that's roughly, an operating budget is roughly $65 million. The assessed valuations really haven't changed much from the previous year. They went down slightly. You know, what that does, that doesn't affect our local tax levy, that 2% cap on the tax levy, but what it does affect is the tax rate itself. So that would have, you know, that's a small decrease, so a very minimal impact. What I would do is, and I urge any board members, board members in the public, to simply shoot me an email if you do go on the website tomorrow and get a chance to take a look at this analysis in detail. I'm more than happy and very responsive to the emails that anybody sends out, especially at budget time. I'll turn an answer around to you within 24 hours, usually sooner. So I do urge you to do that, and obviously, send those to board members. What the board members are going to be doing is I'll be sending out an analysis to the board this Friday that contains the detailed expenditure changes that we made in the budget that Dr. Freed mentioned during his presentation. I have them kind of all laid out on an analysis. You received it with your draft budgets. It was the new initiatives analysis. Made some changes to that since then, but I think the important point is the bottom line has not changed. We stated 2%, the, I believe, was $559,000 of new initiatives, which was sent home in the draft budget. That has remained unchanged. So any of the expenditure adjustments that we made were just that. They were adjustments, they were basically move money from one end of the budget to another, just to make allocation changes. The only change on the revenue side of the budget since the draft was that I added $100,000 to that extraordinary aid, anticipated extraordinary aid number. With the draft budget on February 27th, we were anticipating $1 million in extraordinary aid. I bumped that up another $100,000 to $1.1 million. And then, as I mentioned, I believe at the last meeting, was we were lucky enough to be granted semi-money, $21,227, so I needed to account for that in the budget and help our revenue out a bit. So that's, those are the two only revenue changes, and the expenditure changes, it's said net to zero. And at this point, our next budget discussion is going to be, you know, next Tuesday's board meeting. What happens is this week, as I'm finally going to take this resolution we passed tonight to adopt the preliminary or the tentative budget, I then package the whole thing by this Friday. I get that out to the county superintendent of schools, who then reviews it, sends it back with questions. And then what happens is we then hold a public hearing, which, I don't have the budget calendar in front of me, but I believe it's somewhere in mid-April. And I think it's important to point out that changes can be made to the budget right up to the night of the public hearing. So again, I think it's important to stress that this is literally, at this point, still just a tentative and a preliminary budget.
Dr. Freed?
Thanks, Jim. Just one other thing to point out, the 7:30 time is, should be 7:00 p.m. We will make that change on the slide, and when the meeting is advertised, of course, you will see that at 7:00 p.m. There's a 6:00 p.m. closed session and then a 7:00 p.m. public session on the 24th of the high school. So now it's time for questions and comments, so as the board, please return to the board table.
Thank you, Dr. Freed, thank you, Mr. Tevis. And Dr. Freed and Jim, thank you for figuring out a way to get the William Mason teacher back in. I'm sure parents will be happy about that, William Mason. Any board questions, comments, David, and then Mike? Carl?
Mine isn't really a question. On the last slide, we had it till March 24th, or there's no way we're going to get the budget back from the county office on March 24th. And I see on the addendum, the public hearing and adoption of the budget is April 28th. I mean, I'm just wondering if we need a budget discussion on the 24th, since nothing's going to be changed from what we have tonight. Usually, we just have, after we do the preliminary budget, then we don't have any more budget until the public hearing, unless you guys go around and talk to EDAs or ORE or whoever else. And my just suggestion is to keep talking the budget at every meeting when we're going to be looking at it. I suggest we wait until the budget's approved, and then the public hearing, when we have our formal public hearing. Just a suggestion, it is something to think about, because there's nothing new in my mind if we now announce, and we have a regular meeting here, there's a lot of other stuff we're doing next year. Just a suggestion, it's something to think about, you know, trying to be humble, and I always.
David, and then Mike?
On the teachers, with respect to Woodmont and Valley View, you mentioned, with William Mason, they were very close in a couple of classes to possibly going over, should they get a couple of students. How close were you at Woodmont and Valley View?
So, let's see. At Woodmont, not close at all. Just give me one more moment. At Valley View, not close at all either. At Cedar Hill, going into grade five, right now, we'll have 73 students, we can go up to 75. So it's really at Cedar Hill in fifth grade where we're three away, I guess, from needing a intersection. And at Hilldale, we'll be at 71 in fifth grade, so there's more room there, we're five away. I think that's it. So Cedar Hill would be in the most jeopardy, I don't think, I don't think I'm missing anything.
Right, after William Mason. After William Mason, Cedar Hill is next.
Well, again, William Mason has two areas where they're now one student away, or two students away in different grade level. The only place that nearly as close would be Cedar Hill, and they would have to see their increases for grade five, and it would have to, again, be another three students.
And my other question was, Jim, that extraordinary aid that's anticipated, you have any idea yet how much we're going to be getting? Have you heard anything?
No, I don't. But I can tell you historically what we've gotten, and we've been running about $1.3, $1.4 million that we've been receiving in. This year, I can tell you that, I'm very confident, if all things remain the same on the state side, the application that we're going to be putting forth is going to be significantly higher expense, for the reasons that we've stated now in a number of board meetings. We've had a lot of additional special education expenses past year. So those will be built into the application, which means that we will be eligible, again, all things remaining the same in the state, as far as the ratios, be eligible for more back.
So is there a possibility we might actually get more than that?
Yes, there's a possibility.
There's a possibility.
Michael?
Yeah, I have several questions, trying to make short answers, so please excuse my lack of information and knowledge of that. First of all, just because, oh, I'm sorry. So please excuse, I'm not looking for big long answers. One of the things I think I'll be asked about at some point, the bleachers, on page eight there's, bleachers plural, I understand, is that, you have a photo, is it one section of bleachers that we're getting for baseball? Is it the one?
Yes, I think it's one section of bleachers that can be transported from different parts of the new athletic fields.
Okay, all right. I don't, can't picture how big it is, but I...
I think it's a 10, I'm just wondering, is it 10 rows?
For people that, or is it a start?
Well, you know, I think it's a good start, I think it's probably large enough, we don't get huge crowds. Fans for baseball games typically like to sit on that wooden railing, I've noticed, along the side of the road, and a lot of people bring their own chairs to these kinds of events, and I think also for the soccer and field hockey and so on. So I think it's a good start, and I think a lot of people are comfortable in their own golden chairs.
And none of these are like for guests, I just want to know what, the resource officer at the high school, I'm assuming, maybe, I would guess, there's already been like a job description created, and are you looking for a certain type, or the background, a certain background for the person that you're going to, and how are you going to find that person?
Yeah, so while we have not created the job description per se, there is, in New Jersey, there is school resource officer training. So, while I don't know if it's mandated or not, I think it's good practice for individuals who are interested in, in fact, becoming school resource officers, to go to this extensive training. I know there's one member, at least one member of the Monmouth Township Police Department who has been through that training. So I think the selection of the officer would be a collaborative effort by both the police department and with the school district's affirmation. And I can tell you that the one particular officer I know that has been through the training program already spends a great deal of time in our schools, particularly the high school. And I know Mr. Sanford and his administrative team feel working with him is very positive. So that's kind of where we are with the process right now.
Next question, I have a few, okay. This was discussed at some point earlier, but when I see the term aged out, what is the length of time we're hoping to get out of the confines in years? What are we hopeful for, and can they be upgraded at some point? What's the...
I don't have an answer for that, we'd have to find that out.
I can answer briefly, and I spoke to our technology manager about that. We're actually thinking, we're not, typically you get five years out of computer equipment. The reason I get involved is because of the lease purchase aspect of it. But your technology manager feels we'll probably get less than five years out of these particular devices, because they're very, you know, very low-end, very specific purpose gain on the internet.
What happens to them after five years? Do they buy the batch?
No, typically what we'll do is, I'll come to the board, I'll do a disposable equipment request, and about two years ago, our technology manager took the initiative, and he signed us up for something called GovDeals.com, it's an online auction, and he puts them on there, and we've been doing very well, we've been selling that, selling our disposed equipment, and bringing in some regular for the district's...
So we can recoup?
Yes, something, that's correct.
In the section, there's a new course, an AP course, called Human Geography, okay? I don't mean to sound dense, but I understand human, and I understand geography. Could you give me just a little capsule of what the human geography, I'm not, you know, it might be wonderful, what is it, per se, is it in the social studies realm, or is it in science, you know, where is it?
It's a social studies work.
It is?
Yes.
It's geography, is it?
It's geography.
Okay.
Yep, they just call it AP.
Well, we're all humans, yeah, okay, right. There was one other thing. Could you just encapsulate for a moment, what is the objective, or what are we trying to accrue from the Danielson training? What will that do for us?
Yeah, I can speak to that, and Andrew Casey, if you want to elaborate. So the Danielson model of teacher evaluation is the model that our district has subscribed to. So that's the model we use when we evaluate teachers, when we evaluate principals. It's an evidence-based model, that was something that every school district in New Jersey had to adopt, an evidence-based model. There were at least four, and there's even more, but there were at least four models that the state gave their seal of approval to, Danielson was one, it's probably the most popular model in the state. Charlotte Danielson is an educator who, long before New Jersey decided to go this way, had written extensively about good instructional practice, things that she would see good teachers do in classrooms. She eventually kind of codified that, so it would become more evident and visible for administrators and evaluators to notice in classrooms. So the training can, we have been training our administrators every summer, and with my recommendation, continue to do that, both so that they can keep up their skills, become better at the observation evaluation process. And also, it helps create more consistency between administrators, so that, for example, if Dr. Raj was evaluating a high school teacher, and Mr. Sanford was evaluating the same high school teacher, hopefully, they would have the same evaluation, because they would both be trained in being able to give objective feedback, and notice and observe the various domains that are within this model. So that is, so that we would have money in the budget for this kind of training, and sometimes during the year, we also provide training for our teachers as well.
Okay, so it affects the administrators, we're all being on the same page, so to speak, that process?
Yes, and this summer would be our third year of training.
Now, as far as the teaching staff, or those being evaluated, is there a role for them in the training, as well as the administrators? Or is it basically an administrative training?
Am I correct in saying, sometimes we've actually had training for teachers, in the case you want to elaborate more about that?
The elementary teachers that come to the district, we're part of orientation, we do generally half-day training, sometimes a longer half-day for them. The current teachers have gone through that training when the evaluation system was introduced. They don't get the yearly training, per se. Part of the administrative regulation is to get yearly training in it, it's actually a mandated requirement, the freshman courses, they call it, for the training. But the framework represents really good teaching, so our continued professional development of what good teaching is, is sort of their training towards that model.
One last, sort of a history question, all right? We were looking at the chart that, for, the complicated one, on page 15. Just a little history for myself. The percentage increase that is in 2013, I'm just trying to get my chronology, was that when the township committee got their hands on the budget?
No, no, that was back in 2010.
2010?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so that was prior to moving the, that was prior to moving the election?
Yes.
And so on?
Yes, it was.
So, and what do you remember, just...
I think it was about three years ago now, that we moved, I believe, for the third year, for our budget to now be the final election.
Okay. Is that what?
Yes.
I believe this will be the third budget with the House of the final election.
Actually, I think it's the fourth.
I think it's the fourth.
It could be, I have to look it up.
Because the end of the town council got its hands on the budget before Paul came.
Charlie, you answer it, Michael?
Yeah.
Matt?
Well, I just wanted, since you've asked that question, I just wanted to say, I did one of that last questions, yeah. I did want to just pose a comment, which, and it feeds into what you were mentioning. Back in 2010, prior to, this district was receiving $3.2 million a year in state aid. When the boom was lowered on education in the state because of the state budget issue, we lost all of our state aid, as I'm sure you're aware, in 2010. So $3.2 million drop, aside from the budget defeat, et cetera, et cetera. So this district has lost over, at this point, $11 million and counting, if you would go back to that $3.2 million state...
Huge number, totally.
Yes, yes, these are state aid, right. So what I'm seeing here, and I mentioned this to Mr. Tevis, is this is as creative a budget as we can have, and I applaud you gentlemen, Dr. Freed and Mr. Tevis, not only for the, as much educational creativity as can possibly be used, but also, from a financial standpoint, understand, with the guidance of Mr. Tevis, the Facilities and Finance Committee, this district has been stalling, saving money over time, and being very wise from a financial standpoint. If not, we probably would be in a very different stead, so that we can handle a project like the Media Center project, these boiler replacements. When you lose $11 million for a budget our size over these five years, and then add in all of the unfunded mandates that have come along the pike from this current administration, the most recent of which is the park testing, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars that we had to spend as a district, not because we wanted to, but because we had to, think of the dollars that we have had to sit and be smart with in order to present a budget like this, which is constructive, yet also stays within the confines of all the barriers that we have. So I just want to thank you, Mr. Tevis, Dr. Freed, for what you have done within the guidelines that we have, thank you.
Yeah, I agree, it's almost like we're in recovery, you know, we're trying to recover and do the best we can with, you know, $11 million is an incredible loss over those years, and I don't think a lot of people, John Q. Public, maybe doesn't understand, or, you know, not aware of that setback, ongoing, continual setback that we have sustained.
Right, and again, I would say, it's not just that there are unfunded mandates, professional, just various areas of unfunded mandates, which tally up over a million dollars as well. When you add up the numbers, we've done the best we can. I, again, just congratulate and thank the two of you.
Yeah, and it's such, to me, such an overwhelming task, and I agree with you.
When you add up the numbers, we've done the best we can. I, again, just congratulate and thank the two of you.
Yeah, and such, to me, such an overwhelming task. I agree with you. My congratulations as well to be able to handle this. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just one more question, this seems like a fitting place to put in the comment. This past weekend, I had the opportunity to complete my New Jersey State School Boards Association training. And to hear the little comments throughout of some of the other issues other board members are facing with their budgets, with their administrators, to come back to a team that works so well, it's a breath of fresh air. So I want to throw out a quick thank you for keeping us in relatively calm waters compared to what else is out there. Just a quick question with respect to William Mason position. Now that we have this position back in, covering the second and fourth grades, wherever the need may be, with the numbers being what they are, do we still face a significant risk of an unbudgeted expense should both the fourth and second grades go over?
Well, we do, but the bringing back the position, of course, has cut the risk by 50%. So I do think, you know, we need to, I think, face the risk. Ultimately, if we need to find the position, then Jim is going to try to be creative with the existing money in the budget, because we're going to do our best to, you know, to maintain the policy of class size. But I think that, you know, again, we've helped now, like a good insurance policy, right? We've cut our risk in half, and I think that's possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Someone asked me recently about the Chromebooks. They were amazed that we pay a little bit more per Chromebook than what you can buy on the open market. And I told her that it was because we're also getting the carts with it. Is that true? Is that why we pay a little bit more? If you look at just the purchase price of the Chromebooks, that would include the cost of the carts.
I might have to take a hard look at that, because I really want to say off the top of my head that one, I knew the person, the carts, I know that, but I didn't know what you were referring to with that.
She came to me and said, "We're paying more per Chromebook than what she could buy out there on whatever, Amazon or at the Apple Store or whatever."
Okay.
Well, one thing right off the top of the head is we're utilizing state contract, which is, you know, typically it's bid out, it's a cooperative type of purchase, but it's not necessarily the rock bottom price that you can find out there on Amazon or whatever. You know, there's, one of the reasons we need to adhere to state public contract purchasing model. If we didn't utilize the state contract, I mean, what we'd have to do, the only other way to do is go up the bid. So, I mean, that's an option, certainly open to the district, but it would be cumbersome to do that for everything. So we do try to use these cooperative purchases that we have set up through the data, for example, the study on teacher supplies, the state contract purchasing, as I mentioned, this is a big ticket item that we typically do through that. So it's impossible that she, it's not the rock bottom, yes, that's possible. It shouldn't be, it would work really different, but there could be a difference.
And so in your purchasing, you try to get a quick idea, is it going to be cheaper just to go through the contract, through the state side of whatever contracts you have, because it would take up too much of your time to do it by sending it up the bid?
Yeah, it'd be cumbersome. You know, something like supplies, it's not as much of a concern, you know, things like construction and things like that, because if I'm doing a project that's $20,000, you know, I'm going to try not to bid it, for example, if I'm doing something through data, because I know if I bid it, then I don't have the choice open to us. I don't get to choose who is that, the low bidder is the low bidder, that's the law, and I have to take it. Use, utilize the state cooperative, like data, like they have licensed electricians, they have state, they have contracts out there for certain types of the trades, for example, we do utilize this from time to time. Sometimes that's the best interest of the district, because at least we know we're choosing who we can use comes into the district to do the job. Thank you.
I have a question regarding the high school position. Early on in our budget talks, we, I thought, maybe my memory doesn't serve me, that we were actually adding a chemistry teacher. Was, so that position is, is that what's reflected here, or is that position...
No.
...no longer needed and...
That position was no longer needed. The high school came to that conclusion, I think, almost a month ago now. So this is beyond that.
And the reduction of the secondary teacher position has been in the budget presentations since early on?
No, that's been in, I think, the last two presentations only, yeah.
And maybe this is a silly question, but I know you said you're not sure where that position will come from, as the high school scheduling is still ongoing. Is this a result of enrollment?
I think that plays into it, but I think that as a good deal of the scheduling is, has already taken place, there is more to go, I think the high school administration is confident that they will be able to do without one, one position. They're not ready to name the particular department that's going to affect. I think there are still several that it could affect, but I think it really does depend on some, some scheduling, some scheduling matters.
So like other things we've seen tonight, was this a result of having to pay for something else or not?
Well, it isn't a result of having to pay for something else, because this was brought to my attention by the high school administration. Certainly, I think they knew I'd be pleased to hear that they could do with one less teacher, that scheduling and enrollment would support that, but we didn't specifically look to trade one thing for another.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions from the public? I'll open it up for budget discussion.
Well, that's all right, I'll just make...
No, no, sorry.
Pardon? Question?
No.
So I'll make one more comment. The board will recall, I think, that the last meeting, there really were two questions or from, from the community about the budget, things that they wanted us to look into further and explore. One was, in fact, the teacher at William Mason, and so we have answered that question tonight. And the other was continuing the air conditioning initiative at the elementary schools. So again, as we've looked over this very tight budget at this point, I can't recommend putting dollars for the air conditioning initiative. I would hope that's something that the district would be able to continue to pick up in the future. So I would hope that's possible. But again, as we're looking at staffing decisions and so on, I think that was more important. And again, with the budget that we have, I couldn't recommend that initiative go forward.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Freed. Is there anyone in the public that has any questions or comments about the budget?
Hi, I'm Joanna Howard, I'm at Amber Court Blue. I just really want to thank you from the William Mason parents, that you went above and beyond after all our comments and our pleas to you to keep our teacher. We really, really appreciate that you did listen to us and that you took the time to try to figure it out. And I know the parents are going to be really happy. So thank you very much for working so hard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any, any comments on the rest of the agenda, tonight's agenda, opening to the public? Okay, I will, I am that.
Madam President?
Who's that?
No, just a one minute comment. Something Dr. Freed said a minute ago, he talked about the air conditioning. What's going through my mind right now is what you said, staffing versus, I forget what word you used for the air conditioning. And I think that shows a really good sense of priorities that we have here in this district. The staffing and delivery of an education directly to those students, I think, is a way higher priority than the air. I wish we had air conditioning, but I just wanted to mention that when you said that, it rang with me as that's really where we are. There it is.
So, motion for items...
Oh, do you generally...
Okay, but we have to make one change in item 01, the time, 0 dot 1, the time from 6:30 to 6:00. Okay? Second?
Second.
Any questions on K? L? M? O? Or the addendum? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
We're too fast for you tonight?
I was going to make a comment, I saw Mary Gormley at the high school, and Jay, our representative, the other day. I guess they won a bundle of trophies because she was lifting them out of the car. We'll probably be hearing about that soon.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Dr. Mojak?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Courtney?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Old report, additional report, general report?
Yeah, general report. Now, I'll take a lot of time, this is right now, maybe you could speak more in length, but I'm greatly disturbed by some of the things that's happened over the last couple of days, where there's been information that apparently Pearson, the company that administers the Park Tests, has now been found to have been, shall we say, spying on students' social media. Now, apparently it's legal, somebody posts something on Twitter, I guess anyone can look at it. But it seems that we've had a sequence of students posting things on Twitter, like "This question was stupid" or something like that. Then Pearson picks up on it, goes to, runs into the Department of Education, and then the Department of Education then contacts the school, expects the student to be disciplined. Now, I can't see anything wrong with a student tweeting something about a test after the fact. I doubt constitutionally it could even stop the kid from doing it. And, yeah, if there's things, I guess first of all, I'm offended by the fact that Pearson's even doing it. May not be illegal, but certainly creepy beyond belief. And the second thing is if the Department of Education is pressuring districts into disciplining children for essentially exercising the First Amendment rights, then I've got a real problem with that. And maybe when we have our, we've got a chance to speak with our attorney, see if there's any legal ramifications or options, maybe we can talk about it more. But I just want to put the, you know, put it on the table and just see where this goes from here.
Yeah, thank you, Mike.
May I?
Yes.
I didn't want to bring it up first. For opening this door. Now, I don't have, I don't tweet. I'm not sure I even have a tweeter. It is, I don't know what Facebook is, all right? But I know people express opinions. Now, I do not know all the facts, because I'm just getting this information, as you know, as we came in. And of course, you never get all the facts. Even when you get all the facts, there's still more facts. So having said that, I'm really concerned. I'm somewhere between, based on what I know, or what the facts I just learned, not from you, but our discussion in previous, this afternoon. I'm somewhere between concerned and outraged, okay? I spent a lifetime working with students, and I know that people, there are people out there handling the students, you know, this, "Somebody should be disciplined," which sounds like some corporation now wants somebody disciplined. Not sure. But, you know, I think, I think we're missing the boat here if we overlook the fact that, you know, the colonial governors were told to suppress communications between the people that lived in this area over 200 years ago, okay? So I don't want to go off half-cocked, to use the expression, but I'm very skeptical about everything that I've heard so far. All I can picture is a terrific lesson plan comparing the restriction of freedom of speech by colonial governors prior to 1770 and prior to the Tea Party and the Boston Massacre, as compared to corporate attempts to suppress opinions here today. Make a great lesson plan to make comparisons of those two, and I think students would participate very well.
Maybe it'll be a part question.
What's that?
It might be a part question to compare.
Compare and contrast.
They can turn it into a question?
Yeah, I always, so at this point, I really don't know where to go with this. I'm still digesting it, but I agree, my colleague here might get, I just, when I started analyzing, so I was shaking a little bit at the thought of Big Brother, if it's true, running to Mom down in Trenton, who expects to run to Dad here because Johnny did X, Y, or Z because we're looking at their tweets. I don't know where to begin with this. I just need to find out more information before I get that lesson plan of mine down on paper, okay? That's how I feel, very strongly.
Yeah, I'm sure boards across the state are feeling both concerned and outraged, Mike. I think you used two words that are quite appropriate. David?
From what I understand, it's a nationwide issue as well, it's happening in other states. If we don't have our March 24th meeting, I'd just like to put out that the Michelle Sullivan basketball game between Woodmont and Hilldale is going to be on the 26th. It's a good fundraiser, encourage people to come out to it.
Thank you, David. Any other comment about anything?
Just another happy note that came across my calendar. The school of Rock at MTHS will be hosting two shows apparently, the 30th of this month and April 1st, both to support two local causes. So that will be in the high school auditorium around 7:30 PM.
Thank you, thanks.
I just want to say, happy St. Patrick's Day there. Okay, let's go, I got those.
If there are no further board comments, I'll open it up to the public for items on the agenda. Close public participation, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Charlie?
Second? Second.
Okay.